For the children, bless them and have travel mercies. Thank you for the once you gave them on the way here and then travel mercies on the way back. Lord, I just pray that each one of us as board members would make the right decisions tonight for the students of Stokes County and for the personnel of our county. And we ask you to bless this meeting and all these things we ask in Christ's name. Amen.
Amen. Please join us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands on one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I'd like to call this meeting to order. First, on the agenda, we need to approve the agenda. Are there any additions or corrections? Hearing none, I need a motion to approve.
Make a motion to approve.
Thank you. Is there a second?
A second.
Thank you. All those in favor? Next, on the consent agenda, we have approval of regular session minutes for November 15, 2021 meeting, as well as approval of COVID masking, which also shares the press release from last meeting and the upcoming changes and current changes in the masking policy. Those going into effect beginning January 4th with masks optional, as well as currently any after-school activities are mask optional as well. And we have discussed and shared with everyone the option to be mask optional this evening at the board meeting if they so choose. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Make a motion to approve.
Thank you. Is there a second?
A second.
Thank you. All those in favor? Next, we have the discussion agenda, item A, discussion of ESER funds. And did you want to add anything, Dr. Rice?
Well, I'll just say, Madam Chair, we have included the information from the October meeting that you had requested in here about a breakdown of the ESER funds again and for the state COVID funding allotments as well. Last time, we had discussed this and the possibility of moving some money around. But this is the base information that we have. And I would, again, turn it back over to you to lead a discussion or to get input from the board.
Anyone want to lead off with any comments? I know last meeting, I was trying to think back, you know, we had concerns about, we reviewed how each school was using the per pupil ESER funding. We shared feedback from principals. We did briefly discuss how, you know, not at every school, unfortunately, due to the ADM or a number of student limitations, there was not always extra tutors or staff on hand for, say, some of the, say, second, third, fourth, fifth graders, for instance, at some of our elementary schools. Different things like that. You know, that's one thing for me that comes to mind is, you know, just additional help for students, whether it be through tutoring or tutoring or a teacher assistant, things like that. Just looking for input, you know, if you've had time to kind of reflect any on last meetings, discussions. And...
I mean, I thought the hearing firsthand, how it was applied and understanding how the financial portion were, was applied where we'll hire here so we get better bang for a buck there was very informative. And now it's just a matter of wait and see how the tests go and adjust from there.
As far as end of semester?
Or end of the year testing.
All right.
EOGs will be a better benchmark and I ready will help get us there. I trust our chief academic officer and the wonderful staff that he works with. Well, and I will say that we have discussed that there will be some lapse salary opportunities through some of the tech positions and different things that will give us a little flexibility moving into next year if we see that adjustments need to be made. Again, we do have the two capital projects that were in this that the board approved. If the board decided to move that money, that money would be available as well. But, you know, those, there are some flexible things that we could do later if the need was determined that we needed to do that again. But those are all board-approved budget items that the board would need to take action on to move that money around.
Now, if we move that, decide to move that money around, then Mr. Sands will have to rewrite the grants and all that.
He'll make, have to do addendums to it, yes.
Okay.
And I do think some of the material going forward in the meeting will probably help us as well.
Correct.
Yeah.
So we can definitely revisit this item later on. But, you know, just more in the classroom if possible. And if that does require evaluating after end of semester or revisiting some of these benchmarks, then I'm definitely for it. If no other input or discussion? Yes, sir.
Madam Chair, I had conversations over the last couple of weeks with a few people. And it was brought to my attention that last year, and I talked to Dr. Rice a little bit about this today, and he's going to gather some information for us. So it's not something that I'm really wanting us to try to act on tonight, but I do want to kind of throw it out is, I think maybe one group that we may have overlooked a little bit during our, last year during our bonuses and some financial help would be our substitutes, our substitute teachers and our substitute, maybe bus drivers as well, that, you know, there's a lot of days our schools couldn't function if we didn't have our substitutes. And I was approached a couple of different times over the past couple of weeks from, once from a couple of bus drivers and once from a substitute teacher, kind of reminded me that, that we hadn't, you know, we haven't, you know, we haven't helped that group at all. And I think, you know, I don't know to what extent. I think Dr. Rice maybe can get us some numbers together and see how many people it is. And we might could come up with a plan, maybe through some of the ESER funds, that we could, you know, offer some support to, to the substitute teachers and maybe the substitute bus drivers. Don't know what that might would look like, but, but I think it's something that maybe we need to think about and keep on our minds because, like I said, there's a lot of days if we didn't have them, we may not be able to have school. So they are a vital part of our school and our program. And, you know, and I do want them to make sure that, you know, we, to let them know that we do appreciate them. So I just wanted to throw that out and, and let us think about that between now and maybe the next meeting. Maybe Dr. Rice can have us some numbers together and then we might can discuss it a little bit further.
That's definitely worth looking into. I think maybe that had been shared a little bit or hit on last meeting by some of our principals, correct, as far as the retention and marketability of our, you know, substitute teachers? I think Pat's even mentioned sometimes, right, it's harder to pull them in and things and...
Well, it is. It is. And I think we, you know, certainly need to think about our substitute teachers and our substitute bus drivers. But I don't think that we've ever tried to give them any type of bonus, not that we wouldn't, you know, want to, but you have to think about people that are part-time and at random. You know, there are some substitute teachers that are in the schools and they are there all the time and then they fill in. I think that's probably in the high school, middle school. We may have one or two in the elementary school like that. But then you get into, well, how many days would, would that qualify?
Now, that was our discussion today, that was, that's going to be the hard part is, you know, at what point, how do you break that down?
Because you're going to leave somebody that's going to be slighted.
We talked...
And then they'll feel, feel slighted. And I don't know of any county really that has ever stepped that far out, but, you know...
I think it may be worth a discussion though, but you're right. I mean, that was some of the, some of the things that we talked about today and objections that we had, or not objections, but concerns maybe that we had is how do you, you know, somebody that substituted five times compared to somebody that substituted 50 times or 75 times, you can't give them the same amount, but if we could figure out a system then, in a word, it's kind of fair for everybody. But we do have some subs, I think, that are there just about every day.
Right. And then you have people who, who want to sub and are never called. You get those complaints. And so it's just opening another...
Maybe a little bit, but I do think there are some out there that sub a lot every day. And, and we do want to make sure that they're recognized and appreciated. And maybe it would be incentive for some of the ones that maybe don't, don't take the call that morning to come in to sub, that would give them incentive to, that they would want to come and sub.
Well, Dr. Rice, I'd like to know just how many we have that are like the full-time subs.
And I've talked with finance and they're looking to see what reports they can run to do that. I don't have that information, but we did talk about that this afternoon to try to have that for a future meeting.
Yeah, it was later on this afternoon when we spoke and, and I told Dr. Rice if we could just maybe get some of that information for the next meeting. But I wanted to kind of throw it out there tonight and let us be thinking about that and seeing what kind of thoughts we might would have on that before the next meeting.
And is that anything that would also affect Michael or not necessarily?
Well, I mean, if we used ESER funds to do that, but I don't know that, again, that's why I have surrounded myself with talented people. When I came back and talked to Ms. Moore about that, the first thing her thought was, was that was the last physical school year. And you can't pay somebody in a current school year for a past school year's work. So there are some finance rules that we would have to work through as well, but there may be a little bit more flexibility with local money versus ESER money with something like that anyway. So we would just have to look at the rules of the ESER money, the rules of, and then figure out what we, what we could legally do and what, then what the board would like to do if that's the direction that we'd want to go through.
And maybe look at it for the next budget year.
Madam Chair, the rule remaining to policies moving forward is if we cannot pay greater than the one-time pay, so what we have to look for is policies that work now looking forward. So as you're leaving an idea of who's not qualified, we would have to look at currently the forward rates.
Okay.
Well, and another point that, again, when I got with the finance department today and talked about this a little bit, and we were trying to talk about equity and that type of, how could you make something equitable? You know, when I talked to you today, we talked about a substitute teacher, if they had 176 opportunities, what would 1,000 divided by 176 be? And it would be $5.68. But the teachers work a 215-day contract. So their, their bonus, if you will, was $4.65 a day. So do you pay a substitute 568 a day when teachers 12-month, 10-month employees got 465? Then there's a group of 12-month employees, the maintenance guys of custodians in school and that work a 261-day school year that only got 383 per day. So even with $1,000 a day, didn't think about it in those terms that was that really equitable in that regard? And so there's several things that, when we bring this up of, are we treating all employees? And substitutes are definitely an employee, but they're not a permanent employee. But are we treating them fair and equitable? There's lots of things to consider. And again, we'll, we'll, I've already talked to finance, we're looking to try to get some of those numbers so that we know what we're talking about and can have a more informed conversation with the board because there's, there's lots of rules that we don't want to promise something that then we come back and say, no, we can't do.
Okay. Thank you. We'll move on then to discussion, item B, transportation upgrades.
Mr. Tedder, are you going to cast to the screen? I think you have to open up the code first.
Where?
Okay.
Okay, looks good. Now, Chair, Board, thank you for letting me come in tonight and speak with you. I've got a couple of things that I wanted to talk with you about. First, thank you for thinking this out. I appreciate that. I'm good to do too. I'll be happy to help any way I can on that. First, a board member has approached and asked how transportation is going. So I put some numbers together for you to see comparing us to 1819. That's the closest school year pre-COVID that I could pull numbers from. Ridership is down, but after picking Kevin Harrison, the DPI, ridership is down in almost every, every district in the state. So we are not unique there. Different districts vary in how much ridership is down. So we're not the best and we're not the worst. So one of the things I wanted to bring to your attention was the tier bussing system and the impact that that's having. Last, in 1819, we ran 75 total buses and the number that I had was a little over 2,000 students. This year, we are running 69 buses for a little over 1,800 students. A couple of things I would like to point out. The first one is these that are highlighted in orange, that bus, those buses should be combined with another bus. Due to my having a driver, the schools covered theirselves. And so we had to put another bus back on the road. So that number should actually be 67 instead of 69. When we are fully staffed, it will be 67 buses instead of 69. So that would definitely help our efficiency rating to have less buses on the road, even though our ridership is down. I gave you the total ridership zone right down there at the bottom. And this is not on your page, I just did it today, but I've included the vacancies that we have in each of the zones. We are fully staffed in the north, both drivers and monitors. We've got one driver vacancy in the south and in, no monitors. In the west, we've got four driver vacancies and one monitor. To put it into perspective, at the end of last school year, combined positions, we were around 10 or above. So it is getting better. We've thrown the house to try and get some drivers and we've succeeded in a lot of areas. In some of them, it wasn't a great fit, they decided to move home and that kind of thing happens. But I'm pleased with how the administrators at the school have helped, thrown up support to find drivers, they've supported the drivers that they hired, they ride with them, help them learn routes. I'm very pleased with that. We're getting a lot of support from the schools and from the other drivers. These, the drivers this year have been phenomenal, splitting routes, covering other people because we have to be out, people have to go to the doctor and they have to do things. Other drivers have stepped up and they've split routes and often it doesn't even make it to us. They handle it at the school level, which, which is both good and bad. But I do appreciate the initiative that they take, cover each other and make the machine run. So the sheet that I use in-house to see what our vacancies are, is this one here, so you can do that. So yellow is a vacancy, orange is something different, like somebody's going to have to be out, the bus should be combined, or it's not a true vacancy. So when we started the school year, there was a lot of yellow on this page. So I'm, I'm very pleased in the direction that we're going. So do you have any questions about, I can't give you an efficiency number, it'll be a year before I can give you that. And it may be longer than that because Kevin Harrison from DPI told me Friday or whatever, Wednesday, that they may not even count them this year because ridership is down. So our efficiency rating that we had may be the one that we carry for another year, disappointing with them. But he said different analogs that actually get a thing in January.
So we're down roughly 200 students riding the bus?
Off the line, yeah.
181 students. How much is our ADM down?
Yeah, that was the question.
Because we're down 181 students on the bus.
I think we're down a couple hundred this year from last.
2018, 2019. Yeah. So...
What was that, AM? And you know what it was two years ago?
1819 school year.
Have my battery full of charge, it's already done. So any, any other questions that I can, I can't answer that one, I can look it up, but I can't answer that.
I really appreciate everything you did right there, getting that together for us.
You're welcome. We don't need a board anymore. If you want something to reach out to me, I'd be happy to listen up. I'm trying to keep the data as we go, ridership data and everything, so I can pull it pretty fast if you need it.
You've been great to work with so far. Thanks.
Happy to help.
Eighteen, 19 school year, first month PMR, not counting pre-K, we were at 5821.
So we're down 400 students, basically.
You said 54.
350 to 400.
We're 5526 with, with pre-K.
So with pre-K, it was 5926. 5926 minus 5526, 400 students.
And we've lost 181 on the bus. That's not bad.
And we've got a pandemic.
Still about 50%. So our ADM reflects our difference. That's, that's good.
When, when you dive deep into the ridership and the thing that I showed you, it's working very, very well in the west and the south. We have a lot of buses, 40, 50 riders for the AM and the DM run, not seeing the great results in the north that I, that I had thought would happen as of right now. We still have some with all three schools that are below 20 and below 15. And I get that's because of the geographics and it is what it is. That may be something we need to look at, some type of consolidation in the future. It's not something that we're checking, we're doing right now. But I'm very pleased with the way it's working in the west and the south. There's a couple of buses in the west that are over capacity when you put the two runs together. So that's the way it's supposed to be. Again, I'll share anything else you would like. Is there any other questions about this part?
Thanks a lot.
I'm good.
Great.
I would, you know, going forward, it may be just a gathering of more information as far as who all did ride the prior year and who's not riding and then, you know, a little bit of digging into that. Why, why are you not, you know, what would increase the ridership? Right.
We're looking at every aspect of how we do transportation, from TMS to ridership to drivers to every part of it. We're not there yet, but there's a lot of things that we are improving and the staff at the bus garage have been great. Steve, Angel and Sandra have really stepped up because I asked a lot of them in the three or four months that I've been there. And they've done a very good job working hard and, and given me more than I expected. So the second portion of the part that I would like to talk to you tonight is we have GPSs on all of our buses. We have struggled with that as of late.
Let me pause you for just a second. When we say GPS on a bus, we have a GPS tracking system on a bus.
Yes, sorry.
That, that's important for the, for part of the transition of what we're doing with GPS here in a second.
When you, when you deal with everybody, you don't send right things. So we, we have the ability at the bus garage to track.
Would you aim that mic a little bit? There you go.
We have the ability at the bus garage...
Now it's on. There you go. Sorry. We have the ability at the bus garage to look in an app and see where the buses currently are and where they have been, you know, vehicle history. When I say GPS, I mean GPS tracking. When I say GPS, later I'll be talking about something else, but I'll do a better job explaining it then. We have service through a company called Senovia, and we've had a lot of issues as of late. We have some GPS that are disappearing in certain parts of the county due to signal coverage. You can probably guess where those are. And we're not totally stoked in the support that we've gotten. So I reached out to two or three different companies that were their competitors to see just what was out there and what could maybe serve us better. The one that I, I and Steve at the bus garage landed on was Edgelog in Samsara. So a little bit of background, the TMS system is made and operated by Edgelog, Educational Logistics. That same company also makes GPS tracking that you put in the bus. So that's, that's the one that I would like to look at and that's the one I'd like to present for you tonight for your consideration. TMS is a transportation information management system that is mandated by the state of North Carolina to use since early to mid 80s. We can get away from TMS, but we have to, there's a long application process. I think TMS can work, we, we are just not utilizing it properly here. And that's one of the things that I would like to work on. There's two places in the state that support us. There's one in Raleigh for the eastern portion of the state and the one at UNC Charlotte supports us. There are people at UNC Charlotte, their entire job is to support us with TMS. We can call them anytime during the day, email anytime, and they work on issues that we have. How to improve this route? How do we consolidate this, these two buses? They'll help us with all those things. TMS is one of the major factors that determines our efficiency rating. The number of buses we have on the road, the number of riders are also a big deal. But how efficiently we plan to serve those riders is the biggest part of our efficiency funding. And unfortunately, in this district, like a lot of districts, we don't use TMS the way we should. What we plan and what happens are not the same thing. And that's what harms our efficiency rating, which is why I'm bringing this to you tonight. They have all of the same software that Senovia has. There's a parent portal in Senovia, it's called Here Comes the Bus. There's, there's this called, I've got a slide for it, but I forget what it's called. There is a web school assistant that they have. One of the complaints, being a former administrator, is you can't see TMS at the school level. You only see what the TMS coordinator shares with you. So there's a lag in communication there. And I've put something in place to try to fix that, that spreadsheet. You know, we update it as fast as we can and they can click on it and see it. Still not the most efficient way to do it. Web school assistant is a view-only, that was a typo in yours, it's not edit-only, it's view-only. It's a view-only screen where they can see the live, real-time TMS route that is in TMS for each of their buses. It could be for a run, both runs, all day, all your buses, whatever they're looking for. They can also do a web query and search for individual students to look up what their stop is, what time it should be. I mean, as an administrator and at the bus garage, parents call all the time and say, what time's my child's bus supposed to be here? It's this time, it's not here. And that's usually where we open the GPS tracker and say, the bus is two miles away, it'll be there, be there shortly. It would cut that phone call out because they could just look up what time it's supposed to be there. And then the parent portal portion of it would let them see where the bus actually is. And so they would know if they've already missed it or if it's on the way. And then I'll speak on the tablet portion of it here in a second. Like I said, some of the things that are, are not working well for us right now, TMS is not utilized properly. We, we make it at the beginning of the year, and there's a lot of districts that do this. This is not just shade for Stokes County. We, we make it at the beginning of the year and there's a lot of districts that do this, this is not just shade for Stokes County. A lot of districts make their TMS route at the beginning of the year and then the drivers fix them where it makes sense, but it never gets corrected. So what we say we're doing and what we're doing are not the same thing. Uh, the drivers make their own routes and they're really good at it and the routes make a lot of sense. However, that's not what they should be doing, that's not their job, that's the TMS coordinator's job. So what I would like to do is take that work off of our bus drivers and put it where it's supposed to be. That way our TMS matches what our actual routing is, which is what the state expects. The lack of communication is, is no fault of anyone, the lack of communication is the inability to communicate efficiently. To go from the TMS coordinator to the school administrator to the bus driver and to the parent, we have to have a better system to be able to do that. And right now somebody's being left out of every portion. And what it's doing is frustrating our TMS person because she can't keep up. They, she gets changes two weeks after they've happened. And so it's, it's frustrating for her. When drivers or sub bus drivers get on a bus, the TMS is on a piece of paper. So they're driving this bus at 5:30 in the morning with a tight piece of paper of where each address is and where to turn and it's not the most efficient thing. Uh, as somebody who's driven a bus for years and Dr. Rice has driven a bus, it's not fun. That's, um, you, you asked what might be something that's running sub drivers away? That, it, it's, it's very intimidating to get on a bus in the dark with an area you don't know and pick up a sheet of paper and look at streets you don't know to pick up kids you don't know. It's, it's tough, uh, it's a tough sell to, for me to ask someone to be a sub bus driver. This I hope will help alleviate that. Our GPS tracking is really struggling in the north. Uh, the parent tracking app, everything has to be perfect for that app to work. We have to be on the bus that we say we're on, that they think is coming. The GPS tracker has to be working and the bus has to be on time. All of that has to be working. If any of that's off, um, you get a phone call, like I do. Uh, timekeeper on our buses is wildly inconsistent. We have keypads on there now for our drivers to punch in and out through the link system so that it goes to finance. About sixty percent of our timekeepers are working. So when I at the bus garage go to look up someone's time, you know, if they're getting close to overtime or if they're getting close to benefits or, uh, there are some that I just can't see and I have to call finance to, to see. But then the other ones I can. Uh, and we've really struggled to get service from Senovia as of late. I was not here, but I hear they have changed hands and when they changed hands, it's kind of went downhill, as often happens. This was a slide given to me by Derek Graham, who was the former transportation guru at DPI. This is the efficiency rating for Stokes County. Can you, is there a way to get that number out of the way, Dr. Rice? Great. Oh, now it's, now it's really in the way.
All right, Karen, Ms. Parker, any other?
Sorry. Oh, got it, there you go.
Just tell them where else.
The, this is, this is a graph to show all of the school districts that are evaluated on the efficiency rating in North Carolina. That curved blue line and the curved green line, everyone within that is operating at ninety-five plus efficiency. So that's where you should be. You see the little X and I drew an arrow so it'd be easier to point out. When Mr. Graham was here, I said, can you interpret that for me and tell us where we are in the scheme of everybody else? He said, those four triangles that are upper right of you are the only ones that are worse. So our efficiency rating is eighty-one point eight seven. There are four districts that are lower than us. So we obviously need to try something different. That was very discouraging for me, so. Yeah.
Any idea which four are lower?
I, I did ask that, uh, he said he is not allowed to disclose it. He said you can only tell the districts theirs. So those four districts know who they are, but they don't know the other three. I'm sure the people on that side of the room could probably do some digging and figure it out, but I couldn't. I did ask though. The web school assistant, this is the, the view only window into TMS. So if a school administrator opens up the web assistant and sees that's not the way the route is supposed to be, they know it instantly, they can call Sandra at the bus garage and she changes it. They can send an email, they can do whatever and she can change it instantly. Instead of this lag that we have going back and forth, um, that takes so much time, the web query will, will save school administrators so much time. Being able to look up bus stops, be able to look up runs, be able to look up students on, uh, particular runs, it'll, it'll save tons of time for the administrators. Uh, this is what the school assistant looks like on the front page. Uh, they simply select the school that they're in and they click the parts that they want. It's very, very user friendly, which I cannot say about Senovia. Senovia, it has a, quite a steep learning curve for the portion that we use and for the portion that our school administrators use. And there it gives basically the breakdown of what this run looks like. Uh, eight thirteen, it's at this stop, eight fifteen, it's at this stop, eight eighteen, and these are all the kids that get on at that time. So, and it's got all the other specifics that they need of where the bus is parked and the, the run ID in TMS, uh, cause all of it is numerical with a decimal to, to keep them straight. Uh, this is what the parent portal app looks like. This data that is in these three screenshots is actually our data. So Samsara sent us a GPS tracking device and we put it on one of our buses that was currently not working. So it was going to an area that the GPS tracker would not work. So we put their device on it as the ultimate test to see if it would pick up what the other one wouldn't. Never lost signal. Um, and I'll show you the route in just a second, you have it in your packet. So the parent can pull up every portion of their child's bus ride. Uh, they can set the parameters of when the bus, when they get notified that the bus is coming. They can set it down to point one miles all the way up to two, three miles. Uh, if it's a rural area, uh, two miles might be as much notice as point two miles in King. So they, they get to set it so that they can be prepared and be there when the bus comes. That way we have less kids missing the bus. The, um, the most exciting part of this beyond what it does for us at the bus garage is what it's going to do for the drivers and the sub drivers and that's this portion here. The quote that I gave you is to put a tablet on every one of our yellow buses. And in this tablet, there will be seamless integration between TMS and what the driver sees because it's the same company. So when our TMS coordinator updates something in the TMS software, she can push it immediately or she can leave it and it pushes overnight. And that way, when the driver gets on the bus, cranks the bus, puts their information into the tablet, a turn by turn route of what they should do comes up on that tablet. There's no more paper and there's no more fishing around for it in the dark. So the only catch is the data that comes on this tablet is only going to be as good as our TMS data. So the catch is we have to do a better job updating our TMS data for this to work.
Does that, does that tablet give it voice directions?
Uh, still in the air on that. So they say that there is legislation about whether you can have a voice GPS device on a school bus. Derek Graham says, and the president of Edgelog says, quarter three next year, that should be changed. So as of right now, it seems like it is only visual, but I can't answer that one specifically. We did not get one of those to test, we only got the GPS tracker to test.
Where would this be mounted or sitting or whatever to help a driver?
Wherever the spec committee says that we can put it.
Okay.
That, that wouldn't be really a decision for us at the garage, that would be where the state says we can put them. But we would put them in the, the place that's easiest to see and not a distraction.
It's kind of a weird thing that we own the buses, but they're state buses. We, and like with an activity bus, we own them, we, we could put advertisement on the side of an activity bus. We could say this activity bus is sponsored by Mabesbury Patch, if you wanted to.
My wife would never spend that money.
But on a yellow bus, you're not allowed to have a cleaning supply on there unless it's approved. You're not allowed to do anything. So they would come up with a spec of where that is mounted, but it would be where the driver could use it, which as he has said, this is the most attractive thing to this for anybody that's ever driven a bus. Those of us who, we sat there with our mouths open where when you're driving a bus, you're running to the door. If, if you had a handle on this side before they moved to some of the ones on this side, but you still have to set the emergency brake. You've got the steering wheel, you've got your, your lights and all that going and you're constantly moving this route sheet in your hands, trying to read it in the dark, usually a ten point font, uh, for some reason.
They are small.
As you're trying to read road signs when you're riding down the road and then house signs that may or may not be there. Uh, it's wonderful if they will run to the fire department and buy a sign for ten bucks that's reflective, that sits out by the mailbox. Uh, and you're also stopping and pointing kids across the street, telling them to wait until you see the cars. So you're, I mean, it is a one, you feel like a one man band doing this. And you throw a trip sheet in your hands trying to do it all. It, a- and I've said this multiple times since I've been here. My job is hard on the whole, but the most stressful time I ever have is when I, they call me and say, will you go ride this bus route? Because it's gonna be foggy, it's gonna be trash day, it's gonna be, you know, it, they never call me on a nice sunny afternoon uh, with a busload full of kids and you're riding it. And, and one day I got on Flat Shoals Road and I was driving for the Early College. And I turned off of sixty-six on the Flat Shoals Road. The next thing on my trip sheet says like house number fifteen seventeen. So I'm creeping two miles an hour, looking for a mailbox and seeing that. Cars are stacking up behind me, blowing their horns as I'm slowing down after every road, looking for, squinting, trying to see a house sign somewhere. The house was up by the dump, the Turk Road to the dump. Now I'd been going ten, fifteen miles an hour that whole trip, so you imagine everybody behind me and how long I was late getting to school by the time I got there and the house that was in the neighborhood of that road where the dump comes in, they didn't have a sign. And so finally some kid said, you just passed him. So then you got to stop and say, do I have this kid run fifty yards up the road? I've got a stack of cars behind me, I can't back up. If I pull into the road where the dump is and then come back, where do I have to go to turn around again to come back? It is so stressful, it's unbelievable. The fact that they have a GPS capability, when we talk about attractiveness of sub bus drivers, if I'm in a neighboring county and I'm thinking about sub bus driving and I hear that Stokes County has a GPS on that bus that will tell me where stops are, it's a no brainer for me. I mean, you know, in your car, the difference between the old days of reading the map or having somebody in the copilot seat reading the map to you versus a GPS telling you, okay, the turn's in fifty yards. Okay, twenty-five yards, here it is. I mean, that is a game changer and it's a safety item. Again, I'll admit, I, I miss stops and I pull up and then I've got to make a decision, do I back up a bus? Do I turn a bus around down a road where I don't know if I, there's a turnaround or not? Or do I have the kid run up the side of the road, potentially getting hit? And none of them are good options once you miss the house. It is a safety hazard and this eliminates it.
Um, and like he said, the kid said, you just missed it. It, we routinely hear, well, just get to the first kid and then the, he'll be able to tell you the rest of the route. Middle and high school and definitely elementary school, students should not be given that responsibility.
An eight-year-old should not be responsible for the safety.
Not that they're not capable, we have a lot of students that are very capable and have. But that's not really, that's, as I say, that's not their job. Having bus drivers make routes is not their job, doesn't mean they're not good at it, but it's not their job. Uh, so if we can not do that and be more efficient in the process, that would be a win-win. This, this works with timekeeper, just like Senovia does. That was finance's big question is would they be able to clock in and out on the bus? They would and that we can also leave messages for them for when they're not driving. So they can have a two-way message system. Uh, we can message parents through the parent portal. So if I wanted to send a message to everybody on bus fifty that it's running late, I can do that. If I want to send it to just the popular springs portion of bus fifty, I can do that. If I want to send it to every student in the whole district, I can do that. And we can give that capability to school administrators, we can give it to central office. It will greatly improve the feedback loops and the communication that we have with our parents about transportation. I do not doubt that our ridership is down partly because of that. Because there are things that are frustrating and some people, when they get frustrated, they say, I'll just take them myself. And so that, that hurts us. If we're, I would like to improve our customer service a little bit in transportation, uh, as much as we can and still be efficient. That would be a way to do it by increasing communication. All of our hardware will come to us in new condition, uh, some of the items that we leased from Senovia were used and reconditioned. If any part of the Samsara GPS tracker goes out, the next day, another one to us. And when we get it, we box it and send it back. The tablets are a different thing, the tablets come from a different supplier, we can purchase them ourselves or we can get them from them. They use a combination of AT&amp;T and Verizon. Whichever one has the stronger signal in that area, it switches and goes back and forth. We currently use all Verizon with the ones that we have and, and it's struggled in the northern part of the district. It is the AT&amp;T, the reason it does better, I can't answer that. But, so here is what one of our routes look like. This, this is an actual bus route, a Stokes County EC bus, bus eighty-seven, the one that we put it on. Now this is a long one, a lot of our normal routes are not this long. Uh, but this one serves, uh, London Elementary, Walnut Cove and Southeastern, uh, the EC children there. So when you watch Senovia live, it updates about every three or four seconds. So you see the, the bus as an arrow and then three or four seconds it jumps over here. This is completely smooth, like it's just like watching your, your GPS on your car. It, it never, never glitches, updates less than a second. So this part I like and this part the TMS person likes. Uh, the other part that was really a sell for my people at transportation, and I know it's hard to see, it's a little easier to see on yours. They have onboard diagnostics, so I don't know how much of car people you are, but the diagnostic port that is underneath your steering wheel, the OBD port, this GPS tracker plugs into that OBD port. So everything that you can read from that port, we see live on all of our buses all the time. I can see fuel level, def fluid level, battery voltage, all the way down to if the driver's buckled in. I can see everything live, it updates just every few seconds. If a check engine light comes on and we did one as a test, we unplugged a sensor on bus eighty-seven to see what we would see with the check engine light. It instantly notified us that there was a check engine light and told us what it was before our mechanic had even gotten his truck. So he knows what to take with him to work on it or if he needs to take the wrecker, if he can't work on it. So now the part that matters. So we currently pay Senovia, we pay them on a monthly basis. Uh, and we were on a three-year contract, that three-year contract expired in November. I moved this to a month to month until we decided which direction we were going to go. If we decide to stay with Senovia, we can, we can renew and go back to what we were doing. That comes out to about fifty-six thousand dollars a year. So I gave you a list of the things that they do not offer that the other one does. Edgelog is about seventy-four, seventy-five thousand dollars a year. So a little bit more per year, the upfront cost is going to be between seventy and seventy-five, depending on the number of items that we buy. I recommend getting our GPS tracking for our state trucks and for our maintenance vehicles as well, just like we. just like we do with Senovia. Because I mean, those are local vehicles and state vehicles, we need to know where those are. Uh, and they would also give us the diagnostics that we get on the bus. So we would know when people need an oil change, we would know when there's a check engine light, things like that. Um, Edgelog is on a, um, month-to-month contract or year-to-year or multiple years. Uh, we can sign up for as much as, you know, as long as we want to sign up for. Um, and I, there was a long breakdown that they gave me of, of each line item cost. The highlights of it that I can tell you is when they originally pitched this to me, the total was 181. So I asked very nicely and, uh, they cut the cost on some things. They are also giving us the, uh, school web assistant. The view-only Tims software, there is $12,000 a year, they're giving that up to us for free. Um, we will not get this any cheaper. Um, the only caveat that they have thrown in is for us to get the deal on the hardware that we are getting, we have to get the things that they have in stock. Uh, they can't guarantee that they're gonna be able to replenish, one replenish it all, two replenish it the same cost because of the supply chain issues. Um, so the, we don't have a lot of time to drag our feet if we're gonna do this price. Um, so that covers everything that I brought. I'll be happy to answer any questions you have.
Is there a break for multi-year commitments?
Not that I'm aware of. Um, I'll be happy to ask though. I would wager with the deal that they gave us to get started, probably not, but I'll be happy to ask.
Well, on the backside, it's gonna save us a lot of money on labor and stuff like that in the long run too. Uh, as far as maintenance stuff, trying to keep up track, stuff like that. Allows you to schedule it easier, get it in and out easier. I see a lot of benefits there.
The, one of the things I told, um, one of the other directors was not very often do you have the opportunity to purchase something or change a system and it benefit every single person it touches? From the Tims operator to my desk, to them, to finance, to the sub bus drivers, to the actual bus drivers, to the mechanics at the shop, to the fuel truck driver knowing if he can skip a truck, skip a bus or not, if they're 60% fuel, he can skip them. Uh, it benefits every person that comes into contact with transportation.
Even the parents.
And, and parents, yes. Parents and students also, yeah.
I mean, I could say the students with a substitute driver being on time with this, instead of being an hour late, yeah, boy.
Well, the substitute driver not also having to be the superintendent assistance assistant. Not that y'all aren't great bus drivers. You've got another job.
Well, you know, gotta get what we're.
First question, main question for me, do we have it in the budget that we can allocate if we so move? Could we pull it from fund balance if we had to?
But Ms. Moore, if we use state transportation dollars for this purchase, it would be reimbursed in the future years, correct?
But she doesn't know the rate.
And, and we don't know what rate it would be, but like if we spent that money this year, that money then goes into our rating for next year and total amount spent and we, and it would be reimbursed at an 81% rating. So really we would only be paying like 19% out of local funds, correct? Overall expenditures.
Yeah, I thought it was overall, but, yeah. Right, yeah, that's true, yeah, yeah.
Do we have it in a fund source if we needed it?
Yes, we have it in fund balance that we could use.
The, the biggest draw to this, overall, the sub bus driver portion, all that other stuff is great. Doing something like this is the only way to improve our efficiency rating using Tims. It's, it's the only way that I see this getting better. Um, I mean, I'm, I'm fully aware of cost and I know that they joke, all it seems like I've done is spend money since I've been here, but.
Yeah, yeah.
There, this will be the biggest impact on our efficiency rating is this.
Other, I would want to know other districts and, you know, and their success rate with, with implementing this.
There is one other district in the state that is currently using this and it's New Hanover. And their efficiency rating was already high. Um, I, I don't know if I'm supposed to say it, but when he came to meet with me, he was coming from Winston-Salem, Forsyth. They, I know they are very unhappy with Senovia.
And just for comparison sake, New Hanover County is at 93% efficiency rating, or at least they were in the 2018, 19 school year. So those top.
What, 50, 70 bus drivers short too. They started off 50-some drivers short and my understanding is more quit.
Well, you've got to be realistic, right?
Yeah, yeah, I, I realize this is probably not the most opportune time. Um, but I, I see this as the biggest opportunity. Th- this will be the big, one of the biggest things I do in this position. It, it will greatly increase our efficiency rating. Uh, there's not a doubt in my mind. There are multiples that offer something similar. The issue is this one is the same company with Tims. None of the other ones can compete.
But are there any others that offer the directional GPS?
They do, but they, they don't integrate with Tims.
So that may be a disqualifier for your.
It is, it is to me.
Work with our Tims program.
We can write the RFQ to, to dictate what we want. What do we need to authorize him to go out and solicit bids for another system? Now I'm saying, what does the board need to do for action to tell you to go get us some bids?
What type of year-term contract again, is that year-by-year?
Uh, year-by-year is the most common that they say they do.
Could you put back the amount so that we could look at that?
And then what would the input be from some of your more seasoned bus drivers? You know, is this gonna be like?
That's what it is.
You know what I mean? I just know how some of our more seasoned teachers, you know, these smart boards are not always a positive thing to them. It adds more stress. I didn't know in turn with your, um, with your more seasoned bus drivers, you know, could this potentially be more stress on?
That's, I completely understand what you're saying. Um, there are portions of this that the veteran bus driver would not need. Uh, our veteran drivers probably don't need the turn-by-turn directions.
So is it something they can pretty much just have it on and disregard it?
Uh, they can or they, they can turn the tablet off.
Okay.
Uh, turn the screen off, they don't have to use that portion. Um, what they will like every, from zero years to 35 years will like is they won't have to write up mechanical issues because we'll already have them.
Okay.
I mean, unless it's something physical and like a window in the bus.
My only other issue would be, I want to know before I vote on anything, where is this gonna sit, you know what I mean, in the big scheme of things?
Yeah, and I, I'll be happy to, I'll be happy to look that up. The, the spec committee for North Carolina is very specific in what you can have and where. Um, for example, if you, there's a place you can't have a trash can. I mean, it's, it's incredibly specific. Um, I put, to do our ridership sheets on the buses, you may have seen them, we put a plastic folder on the side of the, they almost didn't pass that. So they're incredibly specific on what you can and cannot do. So it, the state wouldn't let us put it in a place that would be dangerous.
Unsafe, intrusive, anything like that.
We really won't have a choice in that, we, we just.
There's really not a, not gonna be a lot of choice if I have to guess.
Right. And maybe reach out to, you said they're the one other district that's using it, okay.
Yeah, I'll be happy to.
Yeah.
Now, Fred, what is that threshold you were talking about? Okay, if we divided this up and bought the tablets separate, tablets 63,000.
Yeah, your total.
Off of that, you're gonna be under that 90,003.
Your total equipment is gonna be about 75 and your yearly cost is gonna be between 70 and 75. So if, if that's the way you wanted to attack it, you could, because they're both, they both be under 90.
Is the yearly cost, is that, is the service?
The service, so the, the GPS tracking, the, all the web assistance, all the diagnostics, uh, the cell service. Yeah, we're currently paying 56.5 for GPS trackers that about 80% of them work. So this would be, and we drove the bus to the places where we lost service. And it, it was seamless, it never lost it.
But if you don't have the tablets, in the tablets, the ones that they look at, isn't that the most helpful to the bus driver?
To the driver, yes, that would be the most helpful portion.
Yeah, what I'm saying is if we took and sent the tablets out for bid, whether Samsung tablets, let everybody bid the tablets, but our software and all, that's gonna take 63,000 off that 147,000, which gets us below 90,000.
The 147,000 also had 74,340 in subscription costs, which we're paying 56 now. So either way, the equipment is less than the 90 that we are looking at, so we're under that. But I think we need to go cautiously about this. We can put it on action to request a formal bid that gets you time, lets them know we're, and we're moving forward. But in the meantime, it also gives us weeks to talk to seasoned bus drivers, new bus drivers, everybody, because this was just cast upon the board. And I'm all for spending it, but I want to make sure when we spend it, we spend it correctly. I don't say, if, if we don't have to send it out for bid, I trust the input of the directors that, that we have working for us. But I would like to know what's my one-year cost, three-year cost, five-year cost? Is there a break? Am I better to, or are we better to buy three-year, five-year? Because surely to goodness, if we're spending $73,000 in equipment, it's not a one and done.
And then the communication piece that Mr. Rogers mentioned as far as like, I, I mean, go ahead and put it out there, this is something, you know, we're looking at doing or some information, maybe, you know, rather than the, oh, this is it, you got, you know what I mean?
You can give us a firm quotation to review, but in the meantime, I'm making motion, we move it to action to solicit a firm quotation for equipment upgrades.
Okay. All right, all those in favor? Uh, any opposed, we'll move that to action. Item, here we go, B.
I have another, one more question too from Ms. Moore. Um, that, um, you said that we're reimbursed from the state on the 81, 81%. Right, on our efficiency rating, so would 81% of this, uh, total amount be covered by the state and we'd be responsible for the other 19? Am I thinking about that correctly?
Yeah, I don't, yeah, I don't think it would be that simple, it, it wouldn't cover the whole thing. Um, but the, the way Dr. Rice was saying it was when you spend more in one year, you're telling the state that's how much you're gonna spend now. So that becomes your new budget. The state is reimbursing us for 81% of that new budget when they start counting it again. Um, so what you do this year sets your budget for next year and so on and so on and so on. The higher you get your efficiency rating is the more you get refunded.
Right.
Yeah, which is why that's, my biggest priority is to fill driver positions. It's what takes the majority of my day every day. The second is to improve that rating because it's costing us hundreds of thousands of dollars a year.
Well, I want to ask something, if you rebid, if you bid out those tablets like, um, was mentioned, will this company accept those tablets? You did buy from them.
He, he did say we can purchase our own. The, the only issue that I might see, and I'll have to check with, with him, is the mounting. You know, how to mount them in the bus. Cause you have the option to buy a mount where you can take the tablet off and the driver can do their pre-trip inspection with the tablet. Uh, I don't know that we, we really need that. I would rather securely mount them permanently in the bus. Um, be a less chance of one getting damaged and having to replace it. I think it would save us a lot of money in the long run. Um, but I, I can definitely check on that.
But a removable tablet would be storable in a more secure location in a bus when the bus is idle for a weekend or a holiday or a summer?
Well, yeah, yeah, if.
They can be stored in the school's office, assigned to that bus, numbered, labeled. Puts it in, they go in and pick it up in the morning when they do, when they go to pick their bus up.
Uh, that is very possible. The only devil's advocate I would throw out is, uh, when they come back from that break, they're not gonna be able to get in the office to get it. And there's nobody in the office at 5:05.
That's true.
Um, like, but again, I mean, it would, the tablets would be safer in the building, no doubt about it.
We just pre, pre-plan, you know, an afternoon prior to the start, some, you know, that principal or whomever puts them out there, you know what I mean?
Uh, that, that's an option.
With the bus number labeled on the tablet or something. Personally, you know, I like the idea of kind of the reverse order, but of a, you know, the communication more info, but if you all want to move forward with the, um,
All we're doing is.
The bid, just saying we're gonna.
The motion was just to move forward with gathering the information with the intent that we are not opposed to buying it, we just need the final details so that we can finalize our purchase.
Yeah, be happy to.
Or lack of purchase, depending on what.
So get prospects from other companies? Am I hearing that I still need to do that?
And what's? And then there's also the technology statute that allows you to select not necessarily the lowest price.
Right.
So we want to come under both of those exceptions.
Right.
So it only requires a seven-day advertising period. So in order to be sure that we don't have to take the lowest bid, I, I want to do the, the seven days.
Okay.
But if we're underneath the 90,000 in acquisition costs.
If you're under the 90,000, you don't have to do formal bidding. But then you're still gonna, you're still gonna have to take the lowest responsible bid. And that's where you may not, you, you may have some vendor that's cheaper that'll do the same thing, but not as well.
Okay.
And if you want to go with this particular brand or the one that does, has these features that works with Tims. brand, or the one that does, has these features that works with TMS. You know, that's the benefit of the seven-day advertising.
Well, then after we vote in action, obviously, you get Ms. Barker to find out the technology. She may have a better source for Samsung tablets on a large-scale buy.
The only other thing I'll say is I, I have to check with them for the mounting, you know, to make sure that.
You got a lot, a lot to check with them.
Yeah.
Me, that's one of the biggest thing, yeah.
Well, and if they will accept, accept outside bids for, for those.
Uh, I do know that we can purchase our own tablet. Our, I do know he said that. But I think he was saying it as the ability to take it off. At which I am opposed to being able to take them off the bus. I think they need to be permanently mounted. Personally.
And I think it gives you time to kind of sell this to your staff and inform them of, hey, this is this new great thing to help everybody. And this is how it will help you guys. You know what I mean? Yeah, yeah.
I think it's probably where I sold it.
I, I have. I would, I would never bring something to Dr. Rice, Mrs. Jones, and especially you without feedback from my people.
Okay.
These are huge.
Yeah. Cause there were other options that they didn't like because ABC. Um, this is the one we all settled on. Uh, the bus drivers I have spoke to, I cannot say that I've spoken to everybody.
Not everybody.
The, the bus drivers that I have spoken to were very excited. About the onboard diagnostics and the turn-by-turn.
Yeah. Awesome. Well.
Nothing.
For the app on their phone? That's good.
Yeah, currently, well, currently parents are supposed to pay, but they've either waived it or the district picks it up. Uh, it, it's in that cost. He said, the, that's not something he took off for us, they just don't charge. That's part of what the, that twelve thousand dollars was, the thing he gave us for free. That's something that's a benefit to the parents that you don't have to do. Um, and, and you can pick and choose parts of this.
And I think what you said earlier about the communication with TMS and it being updated, it is gonna be big. Cause I mean, our seasoned drivers might get a new, uh, route the beginning of the year. And they're like, wait, I can't drive by this kid's road and go five miles down the road, turn around, expect them to walk across the busy lane of traffic.
Yeah.
When I could have dropped them off when I first left the school. But TMS isn't telling them to do that. You know what I mean? So TMS has some real inefficiencies with the directions they give.
Right, and where our communication issues come there is they get handed the route, they say, oh, I can do that better. Okay, cool.
And they can, right.
But it never gets changed.
Gotcha.
So that, it always stays that way. Because when you're not told something's wrong, you keep doing that thing.
Cause some of the input I got at the beginning of the year was, like you said, that communication piece to parents was, why would my kid ride five miles down the road, show up at home later when you're going with that open door towards their home? You know, right when they leave school, but TMS is telling that driver to go down, way out of the way and come back and have them cross the lane of busy traffic to let off the child, so.
Well, and TMS is always gonna err towards the safest and the most efficient way.
In this time, it did not.
Well.
Yeah.
Uh, we have the ability to, to stray from that.
Right.
It, what I ask is that we stray from it, not one driver.
Right.
I, I think we, we put a lot of responsibility on some of our drivers to make these calls. Like he said, do I stop? Do I back up? Do, we're asking them to do a lot and.
And if this will help.
So if we can improve all aspects of how we do our routing, it takes a lot of their responsibility out. And they can focus on the part that matters, which is driving safely.
Right, right. All right.
I'm gonna say this and then I know we need to.
We need, well, we're gonna take a five-minute recess.
Okay, sorry.
I'm gonna need a quotation, not a he said, or they said, or they're gone. I'm in business, I'm in sales, trust me, I say a lot and.
Well, that, and it has to be a contract for Fred to review, number one. Yeah.
Uh, but there's been a proposal of verbal statements, a lot of, this, this is free and they're not gonna charge that. Uh, before I could vote, I'm gonna, I won't, they're gonna need to provide that in writing.
Okay.
Yeah. Thank you so much. We appreciate it. We'll take a five-minute recess. Thank you.
You know, we put a hundred pounds on Doug and raised beer.
All right, we'll continue on. Are we ready? Okay. Uh, next we have item C, discussion of EC staff allocations.
Thank you. If it's all right, if we could sit here, is that okay with everyone? Have papers and stuff? Thank you, thank you so much. Um, I'd like to thank Cynthia Major for being here tonight. Um, we have looked at all the information and you probably have more things in your pocket than you asked for. Um, but there are probably four documents. We did update the proposed plan for the one eighty-five fund, so you, um, I don't know if the old one was taken out. Um, but they may both be in there. They're both in there. Okay. Um, so there's lots of kind of background information in there. Some, um, some things we want to talk about is the funding sources and percentages of EC students at each of the schools. So the first thing I wanted to look at is the sheet with the blue lines going across it. It has percentages and caseload numbers for, for, uh, teachers across the county. Yes, sir. Like this, yep. And you'll see, um, each of the school names on the left. And then there's a case manager's name and then the number of currently placed EC students that does not include speech only. And then the total caseload requirements that are set by DPI. Um, for each of those levels of teachers, it's different for secondary and elementary. And then the percent of total caseload. So for example, if you look at the very first one at the top, um, that teacher has nineteen people on her caseload. As a middle school, she could have up to fifty, so that nineteen is thirty-eight percent of what she can to have at total, um, as a caseload manager. Um, but we wanted to have, show you this information. Dr. Rice wanted me to put this together so that you could see um, that a lot of our teachers are not up to capacity for their caseload, um, at each of the schools. Dr. Rice, did you want to say anything about this, else about this?
Well, uh, what I will say is, you know, last meeting, Principal brought to you some concerns about staffing. And we wanted to show you, a, and Mr. Rogers asked, well, what are we gonna do about the issues that we have? Tonight, there is a plan in place for the one eighty-five, um, DRC one eighty-five funds that we talked about to offer additional support. And by no means are we saying that an EC teacher's job is easy in Stokes County. We're, we're not saying that at all. But we did want to say, show you that we are currently way less than capacity of what the state caseloads are recommended. And to show you that we are already pulling from the, the page after the one with the blue lines, from state funds and federal funds and local funds to support the EC program currently. The EC pot of money does not pay for all of the services and staff that we pay for, we use in Stokes County. And so while we certainly understand the Principal's desires and, and where they used to be staffed at a certain level, we want to show that we are offering support right now to keep caseloads at a really low level and the plan that we have to offer support using the one eighty-five funds.
Yes, in the, um, the document with the purple, um, and the, uh, EC funding twenty twenty-one, twenty-two, you can see where we get our funding. Um, the purple, the, the things that are highlighted in purple are used for salaries. Um, the things that are highlighted in blue are used for things, uh, like PD. It could be, uh, sending a teacher to a training or a specialist to a regional meeting or any of those kinds of things. Under the black line, you'll see those things, um, budgets twenty-nine, sixty-three, one fourteen, one nineteen, one eighteen, eighty-two. Those are all grants or applications that we have to apply for or we would not get. Um, and those total, it's, I think it's maybe on your second page, over eight hundred thousand dollars. And that's what we apply for. Those are not guaranteed. They're all student-focused. And, um, we never know if we're gonna get them. Sometimes we don't even get those funds until January, February of that school year. So we hope that we get them. We apply for them in the, every year, hoping that we'll get them. And it's, the amounts are never the same. So, um, especially for those, um, in the, the purple there, uh, under the line. So, uh, we just wanted to show you, uh, where our, uh, funding comes from and the amounts that we've got for this twenty-one, twenty-two school year, or these are application, the planning allotments or applications that are fending. We do not have a lot of this money yet. Did you want to share anything else, Ms. Moore?
She was extra in here. On the table.
Yes, ma'am. This one. Yes, ma'am. So the next sheet, um, it says twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two additional funding. This is, this additional funding comes, this is over and beyond the EC money that we receive. This is from state funds, federal funds and local funds. And Lynette put this together, Ms. Moore put this together for you guys to show that, um, we are paying seven point five teachers over and beyond the EC funding that we receive. A director, a speech position, a point four of a social worker, eight teacher assistants and, and on and on. You can see what's being paid for outside of the regular EC funding that we receive.
So fifteen and a half positions that are dedicated to offer additional support to EC right now could be in regular ed classrooms, but we are to try to support the EC. Those fifteen and a half positions have been dedicated to EC and instead of the regular ed classroom. So we are trying to offer additional support and that shows up in those low caseload numbers. Where if you look at Pine Grove Middle School, uh, Where if you look at Pine Grove Middle School, they have two teachers with 18 and 15. That combined would be 33 students, which would still be a 66% caseload for one person. And we have two people dedicated there. Where I think North Stokes mentioned that they used to have four people. They have caseloads of 17 and 19. And so if you had one teacher there, it would be 36 kids, students, which would still be well below the 50 caseloads. So while he doesn't have the four teachers he used to have, he is still overstaffed, if you will, based off the state allotments, which again, we're pulling from reg ed teachers to do that.
And we realize, especially in high schools, that they need people just to run their schedule.
Right.
And so, yeah, so, yeah, that's correct.
What are the distribution of teachers determined?
We look at their caseload. Normally, most elementary schools only need one. We have King, Puffer Springs for elementary, probably the only two with more than one person that I can think of.
Well, I'm just looking at, at King. One teacher has 21 students, and one has 27.
So they're choo, that's the, up to the principal, how they choose to allocate those numbers. Sometimes they stay within this person's, this person's doing four, five. They could be 24 if they wanted to be.
And then I look at Chestnut Grove, where 19, 18, 15 students served, and you've got five EC teachers. And look at Southeastern, they've got two, and they're 28 and 25. So they're a whole lot higher percentage.
Right. And, and those numbers, I mean, when we look, and we make the decisions based on the information we have at the time. So when we're making decisions about next year's teachers, it's usually March, April, May, that time where we're kind of making those decisions, and we adjust for that in August as much as we can. And look at, you know, and look at that. I know Southeastern has gotten more recently, too. So we don't.
Their numbers have increased this year, and they've had several out-of-state transfers. So that's something that had not been initially planned for.
Right.
But we hope that the next plan she's going to present might free up some time for those teachers.
If you'll notice on the first line with the purple highlighting, you see the state aid. That's based on, we talked about earlier, the 12.75, which has recently been up to 13% a cap. If you look, now go back to the sheet with the, the blue lines on it. You can see, like Chestnut Grove Middle School, that first blue line, the percent EC at the school, you can see there's 15.26%. King is 27.16. And you go back, and you think about how we're funded, a lot of the percentages is, it's, we're not getting funded for those kids. And so that's where also Dr. Rice was talking about, that reg ed picks up a lot of that, because we are over the cap for a lot of places.
What is the state average of EC per system?
I've got that information. It ranges, I did put, here is information for all the PSUs in North Carolina. This includes charter schools and those kinds of things. It ranges, if you look at Stokes, we are accounted, we're like number 19 with most, the highest percentage of EC in the state with the traditional PSUs out of 115, 16. It used to be we were first, or the highest.
Highest number of EC kids in the state for about three years running, and we've.
Now we're up to number 19. So it ranges. I mean, there's some schools on here, systems that are 28.30%. That's Tyrell, that's on the far east, very small, I think it was one of the second smallest counties in the state. But it ranges from 11% to 23.
So what is Surrey?
Surrey is, I had it highlighted.
Surrey and Rockingham, let's get our two majors.
Yes, Rockingham is 16.55, and Surrey is 12.29.
And what are we right now?
We are 17.13. And this was based on the April 1 to, head count.
And what are we supposed to be?
We only get funded for 12 points, well, now it's 13%.
13%.
It's really not what we're supposed to be. That's what the, the state really, it needs to be increased across the board for all counties, but that is what we get funded for with the 32 months.
Can we get a copy of what you're referencing there?
This?
Yes, ma'am. Okay.
When I first came on the board in 2012, we were, we were at a really high percent. Because I know the lady from Raleigh drove all the way up here to find out what was the problem. And what percentage were we at then? Do you really?
At, at the highest, it was 21.5%, I don't have it right up, but, but it was at least 21.
Percent?
Yes, I don't remember the point.
And so you have worked so hard to get it down to, oh, what, 13%?
17.
17. I think Dr. Rice, when, 2017, it was like 21% at still.
Really high.
It was, and, and if you remember, we had some conversation about that then, that our push was going to be proper identification, proper services, and then proper exiting. And, and that was the focus that we put into the EC department. Again, anytime you have changes, it's met with resistance. Some of our staffing, we've worked to get down through attrition and through percentages at schools. And again, then the next year, you might have it perfect, and then all of a sudden, 10 extra kids are identified at a school. So there's changes midstream. But we have really worked at the proper identification, and again, making sure that everybody gets proper services. But then the other part was that proper exiting. There were some people that were like, well, they, they exit, but let's keep them on another year. Let, let's serve them again just to, to make sure another year. And, and so we've worked on making sure that we are following the proper EC process to get some of that, those numbers down. And again, that MTSS processes help, IST processes help, all of those things that we've talked about, where we're trying to make sure that we have good core instruction, and then good strategies of intervention in place before we enter the EC process. And we were over identified there for a while, because when we started doing the proper identification and proper exiting, our numbers went down.
I think if you think about it in terms of, a lot of these students needed additional support, but they did not, or do not have disabilities. So, and I use this very loosely as a catchphrase, EC's not the only game in town. If we, if we can keep our numbers at a, a level that's, you know, not, not 21%, then we can utilize the services for the students who truly do have disabilities in MTSS, and tutoring, and the social emotional support, all of those, and the maybe, you know, youth havens, school-based therapy, all of those kind of things do their job, too. You know, we're maybe not mislabeling some kids.
And the funding is not equal. We have, if we have a student that requires a nurse while they're, while they're here, which could be up to $55,000 a year, and a student is just speech, we get the same funding for them. We don't, it's not, there's no formula for higher-need students who get more money. So it, we have to spread it evenly across. So, yeah, and that's where the special applications come in, risk pool funds, but you can only use that for five years, and then you can no longer apply for those funds. So the other information that we have in there that we talked about is our proposed plan for the 185 funds. To be equitable, we looked at the best way we could do it. You have two plans in there. The first one was based on the teacher salary being approximately $60,000, and the TA being approximately 30. But with the increase in the classified TA pay, we had to bump that up, and therefore, we, we had enough money before. But now with the, up to $15 an hour for teacher assistants, we are down a teacher salary. So that would have to be picked up somewhere else. But with this plan, the middle and elementary schools would be able to share a teacher assistant, and the high schools would be able to share a teacher. And the reason why we did that is, the high schools, their main concern is having enough people for scheduling. And so that's where we decided to give those high schools a teacher instead of a teacher assistant.
A teacher assistant could not be the provider of specially-designed instruction in the class.
And so the information you have at the bottom is our ways, or some, some expectations about the teacher assistants in elementary, elementary and middle school. They would carry out the lesson plans that the case manager had designed. They would also still have to work under the supervision of a teacher. Those, again, those services can't be counted as service time because they're not qualified. But they can work under the supervision of a teacher. So we would make sure that they, the teacher assistants weren't used for a personal assistant, that they were always under the supervision of an EC teacher. And they couldn't be pulled as a substitute. And I know that's, as a principle, that's, you have somebody sitting there you think you could pull, but those, those teachers would not be able to be pulled to be subs. And then the rotation could be either three-day, two-day, if one or two schools are sharing a TA. But there could be the possibility that one school is just going to hire a halftime teacher, and their parent school is just going to hire their own halftime teacher, so they wouldn't have to go between the two schools. Does that make sense? And so some of the things on the back, this is that, that we would collaborate with the administration at the schools if they had other needs, that we would check with them, work with them to see how that would work. But some of the things that they could do is help set up IP meetings, contact parents, communicate with teachers to collect data for IP meetings, help to progress monitor students, and facilitate learning under their supervision. So they would be able to take a lot of legwork out of the IP meeting, so that the teacher would have more time to work on other things. The teachers for the high schools, they could, of course, design lesson plans, they could collect data, they can do all these progress monitor, communicate with the case manager, they could be used to assist with instruction. And they would have to be compensated for mileage if they were sharing a teacher with another school, because it's very difficult to put a teacher in a schedule when they're only three, they're three days of the week. So it would have to be, we're here in the morning, and we're somewhere else in the afternoon, so they would have to travel between schools.
Doesn't that account for a lot of lost time driving?
Yeah, so we did figure out that they would have time to do that, to travel. I try to put them as like Meadowbrook and West, which is not a lot of time in between. But they would have to have time for lunch, travel, and plan. And then the only other two, of course, would be South and North, which is a little further distance, but there would be.
Yeah. It is, it is, it is 30 minutes, and that teacher would not have the same 90-minute planning. But there, with travel, they could have, you know, 30 minutes, 30 minutes, and, and lunch.
I'm not sure how marketable this would be, and what retention would be on something like this.
Uh, well, we only, we only have the money for.
For the one year, basically.
Yeah, if they, if those two schools could work that out.
Yep.
Yeah, with a schedule.
What's the problem with the three-day, two-day then?
Because if they're in a schedule, and they are expected to be in high, in that classroom for, for a student who has five days a week of service time on their IP, they would need to be there for five, they couldn't be there three days, and then.
So they've got to be with that student the whole time?
They may, they would, they would have to be in that classroom.
So that would pretty much kill the one semester here, one semester there, because then you're not serving the same, same student you got.
If you're supporting an English class, that's a one semester class. So at the high school level, that works in with a class.
Are we supporting classes or kids? Because I mean, the numbers.
Supporting kids in a class.
Right.
So like, if you're offering math support for one group of kids, you'd be in a math class, possibly a math class that morning. Then the second period, you'd be with an English class, and then, so yes, but if you're, those are semester classes, so you'd be supporting kids in those classes, and principals already work for those schedules to try to make an inclusion class for a semester or second semester. So we're already doing that. And, and where, I don't want to speak for Mr. Racy, that's what he was saying. When I had four people, it was easier to support everybody in a schedule without having to condense my EC kids into one or two classes when I'm trying to support them in four grade levels in math and language arts. And in math, you could take multiple classes, well, in language arts, you could as well, because not everybody's just taking basic math 1, 2, 3, and 4, or English 1, 2, 3, and 4. There's other subsections that you could take, and so it's not just trying to support eight sections a year. And so you're trying to, and that's where he was saying, if I had four people, I could support more than just trying to condense it into eight sections a year.
And that's what, why we went for teachers at high school. I like Johnna's semester suggestion. I'm not saying it has to be, but, but based on Mr. Racy's suggestion, and based on a conversation with Johnna in that she, in the past, she's had a, a class where she had a, you know, a TA providing the only, you know, had to be the only support versus a, you know, a specially-designed teacher. So that's the, that was the background of why that was suggest, we suggested that.
I'm just concerned with the students we're trying to serve, if they're only being served one semester, what happens to them the second semester?
Well, they're supported based on their IP, what they're, what, what subjects they're supported in.
Some students may have a curriculum assistance class, and that would support them, you know, one, an additional support in a semester.
It sucks having to turn around and look at her.
I'm sorry. And then also, it might be that the student has English one semester and, you know, services, and math one semester services. It really varies based on the individual student, but there's all, there are levels of, of support, a continuum. So if a student, you know, needed that additional support, and they only had inclusion English, and they had that first semester, there are courses, EC courses called curriculum assistance or study skills that we can provide that extra services for those that need it.
And again, those that are identified, correct, it's not just for the average struggling student. Like we've talked about earlier, this is not it, right?
Exactly. Not that curriculum assistant.
Right. And when would this proposed plan start?
We wouldn't be able to start until the next school year.
We would use the spring to advertise the, the positions in place, and work with the principals to get them in the schedule for the next school year.
And it may still be difficult to find staff. I know Melissa had, in, in the discussion of, of the plan and talking with different directors, that was one of her worries and concerns, was being able to actually find people, which it will be very difficult to find.
Any other input board questions? Do you have anything further, Ms. Dillon? I mean, not Ms. Dillon, I apologize.
No. But I'm not retiring.
We, we did, we did try to, and I did watch the last meeting, and we did try to base this on some of the comments that were made, both by principals and, and you guys, and we were trying to be equi, more equitable, so that was there until.
And I did talk with the, the three principals that spoke up and told them what the plan was, and they were supportive of that.
Well, thank you all so much. Thank you. If there's no other comments or questions, we'll move on then to item D, discussion of capital projects update.
Is that better?
That's better, thank you.
Emergencies, we're still continuing to do those. The fall protection, that's the school we installed it at. We talked about how we divided the band equipment by ADM. The two roofs, that is with the DPI engineer, that's where we, we get those services for free. He can't give me a date, but he said we would get them bid out in this school year. We're working on the interactive boards. Uh, we're working on the interactive boards. Uh, again, the schools that they're scheduling, there are hardwood floors to be done. The burner for Mount Olive is still with the D P I engineer. Uh, he's had some questions on that. Um, the new heating system for F building, we had a meeting scheduled for eleven sixteen to meet the engineer with, uh, C E S. That got changed to December the ninth. Uh, so we'll be meeting, meeting him for that. Uh, the monitoring for the child nutrition, we, it's not on this update. We just found out today we're meeting Nitor. We're doing a virtual meeting with them on December the eighth to discuss what we have to do to get that project started. Maintenance vehicles, again, they're on order. Uh, I'm going to check to see what, if I can get a delivery date on those. Fire alarm panel for Piney Grove and speaking with the contractor would be better off the way till, uh, January one or after. There's a new panel coming out. We could save some costs there when we do that project. The freezer at South, we haven't started that project yet. Uh, the auto tech, uh, we have those plans completed. Uh, we're looking at bidding that out in January. And one thing we're going to include there is the air conditioner for the fire academy. That'll be part of that project too, because that classroom's not air conditioned either. Pinnacle, uh, the, uh, keys, uh, those materials are on order. Uh, the electronic access, uh, I think we missed that. I think that one is working. It says it's working with I T. But, uh, I think that's when we just, it's just, we just missed that when we updated the projects. That one is working. The computers are on order, uh, for Chestnut Grove. The painting at London and King, that's, we don't have a date. We've got the materials in and looking at that, we're probably going to have to schedule that once school is out. Because our teachers to go in and paint during the school year, they have to take everything off the wall and everything has to get moved five feet into the center and then painted and then put back. A teacher's not really willing to do that on their last day of school and have it done before the kids come back on the, or after a vacation or holiday or something. Uh, I know I talked to Matt about the, the next ones about transportation. He hasn't got those completed yet. Uh, the restrooms, but, uh, at London, that's something we'd be looking at doing over the summer because we was going to have maintenance primarily do the labor on that. And this was just materials. Uh, we hadn't ordered the tables for the cafeteria yet. We got to finalize that list. Again, we've talked about the track, starting that project on June one. Uh, the maintenance upgrades, we're also going to talk to the engineer on December the ninth to see like what we, uh, about going around, looking at our schools and see what he feels like some changes could be made there. Germanton, that P O has been issued. I did talk with that contractor the week prior to, two weeks prior to Thanksgiving. He's got the materials on order for that. Uh, the carpet for the central office, we're, I got to get with Lannett looking. We're looking at doing that over Christmas. Uh, and then we hadn't started the project at Nancy Reynolds, uh, on the parking lot at this point. The carryover projects, uh, were all good except the Nancy Reynolds gym. That project has been awarded to A R Roofing. The submittals have been approved. They're just waiting to go, they get all materials in stock. They've got most of the materials. They want to make sure they have all materials on hand before they start. Because some of the lead times has changed, uh, like for the Ony and Meadowbrook, that are already supposed to have been done. They've got most of the materials in for that, uh, but they, they got the panels, but they don't have the trim material. Chestnut Grove, the Ony, and that was supposed to have been done in November. That has got bumped back until probably sometime February or March before that, they're saying that material's going to be in for those. As far as the Ursa funding, the ionization, I, prior to the board meeting, I passed out a letter that I received from Rockingham County. Just said the, the needlepoint ionization manufacturer, the G P S, which is Global Plasma Solutions. There had, they're in litigation. They're being sued by some school systems businesses saying that their product doesn't work the way they say it does. This is the product that we would like, that I would like to have installed in Stokes County schools. Uh, the reason being, some of the other ionization products, when you look at the probe or, uh, on the ionization, they have to be cleaned often. Some of them up as much as once a month. So someone has to physically go do it. The good thing about the G P S, it has an automatic cleaner, looks like a impeller, they would automatically clean those. But this is the one I received from Rockingham County. They started to put these in when this came out. They, they, they decided to stop doing that. I know Forsyth County has installed them in their schools. I think they're happy with them. Uh, Surrey County hasn't installed them in their schools. Uh, when I Google this and look, there's, there's just, it's all over the board. The, the California, some of the people in Californias, it was either Tennessee or Kentucky, they've had these installed. They're turning, they've turned the systems off. Uh, so I just want to make the board aware of this, see if the board still want to pursue.
They turned them off strictly because they felt like they weren't preventing sickness or they were just too much of a hassle to clean. They weren't doing the self-cleaning.
They, they was doing the self-cleaning. They, some of her saying this is producing some harmful chemicals. The company's denying all this. When you look it up online, I don't want to get into that litigation. When you look at all these stories and read them online, uh, but they're saying that a lot of schools, they just turned them off for this reason pending litigation. So.
We haven't installed them.
No, ma'am.
Even ordered or anything.
And which item was this here?
This, it's the Ursa funding projects. It's on the very last page, like page three.
But we still have that money in.
So that money is still in the Ursa funding. I didn't know if that's a project the board wanted to continue to pursue, look at other options. And as far as the window replacements, we haven't started that yet either. No.
Can you, can you look into it, Fred? Okay.
D P I has offered no recommendations or discouraging thing either way. They've not weighed in on any ionization, air purification that I've seen.
I know that Forsyth County was the first county in the state to put them in. When Forsyth County put in three different types, one type wiped out a bunch of controls and stuff. The G P S is one that we're happy with. They've given us no issues whatsoever. They're self-cleaning. They do a great job. I mean, I've physically been working on a unit while it was running and watched it go through its steps and self-clean.
And then looking at them, the, the G P S was the ones that I would write the specs around to try to get because that's the most maintenance friendly of any album, patrol friendly of any album.
What are your thoughts on it, Ricky? You like it? You like them? You still have confidence in them?
To be honest with you, when this first came out, uh, that was the crave. Everybody was wanting to say the ionization was the, the way to go. And that's why we put it in the budget. But standing here now and hearing this and some schools are doing it, some schools are not doing it. I don't know it'd be the best way that we could spend our money.
Is there an alternative you would suggest?
Well, and when you look at ionization, ionization is ionization. Um, what I liked about this one was the maintenance friendly. It self cleans. So you don't have to have someone, I mean, again, some of them you have to go back once a month. Some of them they're paying on manufacturers every three months. So you'd have to have somebody physically go back once a month and clean these probes. Uh, that's just, that's a maintenance nightmare.
The probes on them, the two little prongs.
Yeah.
Look like a little bit of hair.
It's like whiskers or, yeah, I was going to say whiskers sticking up.
It takes five seconds to clean.
But how many of them are there?
Oh, you're looking at one in every classroom that has its own air han, that, that has its own air han, uh, classroom unit. The big air handlers would have multiple units in them, like West Stokes, like one air handler there, it may serve fifteen, twenty classrooms. Uh, but like North Stokes, South Stokes, you'd have to go to every classroom to each individual, uh, fan call unit in a classroom.
Unless we were with G P S, which does it itself. So if.
Yeah. If you went with G P S, that's the one that cleans itself. And that's the ones I would have wrote the specs around.
I mean, we've had no issues with them in Forsyth County. And another thing I've noticed there, we've had no clusters in the thirteen schools that I serve, no clusters. Each school has five hundred plus, including Glenn High School, around fifteen, sixteen hundred kids. I mean, I saw, I worked thirteen different schools. And I specifically asked six today. High schools, middle schools and no clusters. So something's working because they're not spraying or nothing. I mean, basically they're wearing a mask and that's it. And most of the kids are not even half-wearing the masks. I mean, just, I see them all day, you know, the mask hanging down, stuff like that. Nobody's saying anything to them about wearing it. But something is working to keep them from having the COVID, to have clusters with that many kids in an urban setting. I mean, in a rural setting, you would expect the kids to be more distance apart. But when you've got two schools less than two miles apart and there's over a thousand kids in those two schools in elementary, uh, those kids sort of jam together. They should have COVID more than say any school in Stokes County.
Ricky, what would be your, uh?
So something's working.
Choice on these, if it's not this system, which one would you choose?
I really hadn't looked at any other system. The ones I've got, this is the only one I've seen had the self-cleaning mechanism on it. The technology, ionization, the technology is the same. Ionization is ionization. It's the cleaning of the probes is what really attracted me to this particular brand. Because it's less maintenance on it. It just has a light.
Do you think the ionization is worth it?
That's the six hundred thousand dollar question. That's, I was going to say the million dollar question, but that's a six hundred sixty-six thousand dollar question. At one time, when this was first put in the budget, I would say yes. But now I'm skeptical because there's some schools that I don't know Forsyth, one of the first, Rockingham started to do it till this article came out. They pulled it. Surrey County don't, don't intend to do it. I know Ashboro City's not doing it. Surrey County, they doesn't fog. They use the same product we do, that G E Fight Back and wipe everything down like we should be doing, uh, with our classrooms. But, but they don't fog once a week like we do. And their cases are about like ours.
Dr. Rice, based on.
There is no fog in it.
On your word.
Yeah, Winston Salem doesn't fog.
Knowledge and situation. How many of our COVID clusters have come from in-school exposure? Yes. Educated guess. You've got a doctorate. That makes sense.
I, I could say one guaranteed, uh, possibly two of the five. The other three were community and without looking at that data right now, I, I could, the, the first one at Southeastern was school spread, uh, at the beginning of the year. And then this last one at Chestnut Grove, I would say is, could, could be contributed to that. Again, it's impossible to tell where somebody got it, uh, but I would say that those are two educated guesses that those, two of the five came from school.
Any other comments or questions for Mr. Goins?
I think the only thing that concerns me is all some of the, um, long range effects that's listed here. So I.
And this was shared with me by, by Rockingham County.
Okay. That, is that why they quit? Is that why they stopped doing?
That's why they stopped.
And where'd they get this information?
It was, I, according to this, it was emailed to Mr. Stofel. He's their maintenance director.
Well, that, that is a concern certainly.
So we, we haven't ordered these yet, have we?
No, sir.
So we're going to have, is Free going to check into it?
That's what, that's what I mentioned anyway.
I just want to make the, the board aware of this information.
Uh, if it is in the court system, how long is that process typically done? Long after Esser has expired.
And this company is based out of Charlotte. I mean, it's a North Carolina company. That was another attractive. But the question to me comes up, do you invest six hundred and sixty-six thousand, three hundred dollars into something that may or may not work? Or do you invest it in a different route? And whether that's another capital project like Moore Windows, which you know work, like they shut, they were insulated, or do you go another route if the board wants to put in other things in the classroom? Or tutoring money or whatever? I mean, that, that's the question. I mean, the board wanted control of the Esser funds and, and you approved a budget. And you approved this project, but we wanted to share with you the latest information that we have from surrounding districts and all that to make sure that's the direction you continue to want to go. Or do you want to reallocate that money to another place?
Well, it's something to think about certainly.
And so, uh, my suggestion is to hold off on, I mean, you, you don't have any plans to. No, we're not going to bid it out next week. Anyway, but to hold off for a little bit to let y'all think about it and maybe see how some other things play out.
Right.
And again, if you want to reallocate the money, we certainly could do that later.
I'd like to, Mr. Johnson to kind of, Mr. Johnson, maybe if you could kind of look on the side effects too. You know, that could be long-term. You just don't know.
Any other questions?
Was there anything else, Mr. Brown?
No, I'm good.
Okay. Um, we'll move on then to discussion of COVID nineteen updates.
While you're queuing that up, Mr. Tetter, as we're converting activity buses over, have we ever looked at the cost to wrap one, vice paint one? Because I know your predecessor had looked one time. It was going to be about the same. I'm just thinking if we're going to spend a month to wrap them, make them flashy, let them say students first. Let's advertise for Stokes County as they thaw. If we're painting buses, why not just vinyl wrap them?
Oh.
And put the Stokes County, it's an activity bus. Advertise that we're Stokes County. We're proud to be here. Hit the road.
How much more costly is wrapping? I don't know.
Well, I know when, when South got their latest smaller bus, two or three years ago, I was told it was just as cheap to wrap it as paint it.
Yeah, I'd say it probably would be too.
I mean, we'll check into it. Stokes, Stokes shines or something like that.
Students first.
Have you seen the chip paint on some of our activity buses? I know you're a Duke fan, but get the glasses changed so you can see a better game and a better bus.
Board, I, I do have some updated COVID numbers for you for today. The health department updated their number late this afternoon. So those are the latest numbers from the health department as well as ours. Uh, there's a hundred and thirty-two active cases in the county. Five active cases in our schools with teachers this afternoon. And thirty active cases with students. The percentages are there. Uh, again, we have had five clusters this year. Uh, our status as of this afternoon, all of our schools would be in the green. Chestnut Grove is the closest to five percent at the four point four four percent. Uh, that was as of two forty-five this afternoon. The numbers, I, I did re-include the numbers of the positive cases per day so that you could see, uh, after the Thanksgiving break, again, we have one day's worth of data that has come in today. Uh, we had, did have a little bit of an uptick toward the beginning of last week. Uh, and then again, we're, I know I went to Mountain View Medical Walk-In Clinic today. Uh, my D O T physicals expired and I, I went to see about that and they told me that it was a three-hour wait. Uh, they, and I said, is that common? And they, she said, no, it's been a long weekend and a lot of COVID testing today. So again, I expect these numbers to go up, uh, but for those days, but that is where we sit as of this afternoon. Um, again, some of the trend data, this is from the C D C from July first until now. You can see that spike at the beginning. And then the numbers have been trending downward for the county. I thought this was interesting. This was the vaccinations in Stokes County per the C D C. Now, again, what causes distrust is it's different from the D H S, D H H S is reporting for Stokes County. But that, uh, lets you know that percentage of the population, fifty-two point three percent of our population has received at least one dose according to the C D C and forty-two point nine percent are fully vaccinated. Uh, if you do some of the math from the D H H S website, you know, part of the reason that we had for delaying our masking program uh, until, uh, optional masking until December was to give people an opportunity to be vaccinated. When you subtract the numbers out, five to twelve-year-olds so far in the county, uh, fifty student, well, I say student, that could be anybody. It could be homeschool, charter school, anybody, but fifty people, five to twelve-year-olds so far have received at least one dose. And nine hundred and thirty-four twelve to eighteen-year-olds have received one dose. Uh, for Stokes County, you can see the projections are not trending downward as they were, but more look.
Uh, for Stokes County, you can see the projections are not trending downward as they were, but more look flat than what I've shared the last couple of weeks. Think a lot of that probably has to do with the holidays, but it still does not show an uptick coming. But that is the latest data that I have at this point. Is there any questions about any of that?
Any questions, board? Hearing none, we will move on to the action agenda. We have item A, approval of personnel and coaching. Any discussion? Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Thank you. Is there a second? Thank you. All those in favor?
Uh.
Next, we have item B, the quote for the transportation bid. If anyone would like to give the proper name there.
Madam Chair, I make a motion to authorize the Dr. Rice staff and the Transportation Director to solicit quotations for the upgrade of the transportation tracking system and the technology therein requested for a solicitation of bid.
I'll say.
We need the whole, no, I'm joking.
I couldn't say.
All those in favor?
Uh.
Next, we have the information and announcements.
Board members, a couple of things. Our last regular session of the two thousand twenty-one calendar year will be held on December the thirteenth at six PM. Uh, we have their graduations. We'll continue those this week. We've had two really great ceremonies at Sandy Ridge Elementary and Nancy Reynolds. We'll continue those. And also I want to let you know that our calendar committee will meet next Tuesday at South Stokes High School at four o'clock PM. Mr. Bryant, Mr. Rogers are serving on that committee. You all are welcome to attend. If you have any items you'd like for us to consider here in that meeting, please let us know. Uh, we hope to bring a calendar to you by the December board meeting.
So.
It's great.
And that's all that I had.
No other than I would need a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Uh.
Thank y'all. Have a good evening.
Board, for our holiday breakfast, if, if you are still planning on, if you are planning on attending that, please, uh, let Pam know, uh, this week. We have to have the final count for how many people this week. So if you're planning on attending, please let her know if you're.